I'd like to call this meeting to order. And please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, members of the board, we have three adjustments tonight. We'd like to add item four, a first read of amended policy J I C K, just bullying and cyberbullying prevention in schools, and move existing item four down the agenda. Add one name to item five, that would be Carolyn Cutney. That's .5 gifted and talented teacher at Ellsworth High School. And add item seven, which would be a review and discussion slash questions of student handbooks.
Okay, so I need to remember all of that. I make a motion to amend the agenda by adding the following. Number four, first read of amended policy J I C K, bullying and cyberbullying prevention in schools. Where are the other ones, yeah? I'm sorry.
Review and discussion.
Read on the front page.
Review and discussion of student handbooks.
Can I second that?
Discussion? All those in favor? Approval of minutes? August ninth, two thousand sixteen?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August ninth, two thousand sixteen, as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Communications and correspondence.
I believe it's included in your packet, board members, letters of resignation. And I'll address those individually in my report.
Public participation. Item G, administrative board reports, and I believe Mr. Clark is here.
Doing my best, Mr. Clifford imitation. We had the bar training, which is the building assets reducing risk and federal grants training that we use with our freshman team. That was August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. The entire freshman team took place in that. A lady named Marilyn Peplow and Linda Ewing from Lawrence High School spent thirteen hours over the two days with the team. They trained on I-time curriculum, team meetings, the Google Doc to track student progress, risk review meetings, and overall bar history, the St. Louis Park High School information. And the new ninth grade teams and other staff participated and got a lot out of it. We have many of our new hires are on that team, and it was a good experience for them, and they blended very well. So we were happy with that. Because of our, a lot of it has to do with our great guidance department, we had a lot of late hires in the summer. And to use the strengths of the existing staff we had and some of the people we hired, they had to make several changes in the schedule and several versions of it. And I don't know how they did it. I've done a schedule before as a principal at Calis when we had no guidance counselor for a while. And whatever Mr. Clifford asked them to do or whatever scenario, they were able to put it together for us. And to, as a segue right into that, because of our teaming with the freshman academy, we now have a tenth grade team and then an eleventh and twelfth grade team. And that is good because every member of these teams, and I'm on the sophomore team, for instance, we all are responsible for, depending on the size of the team, fifteen to thirty kids. And what that means is, you know, the teams could change each year. But for that year, we're responsible for contacting their parent. It could be for good things and when they're struggling, and to make sure they get the academic support they need. We meet twice a week. Guidance was able to put a schedule together, so all our times are common. So, for instance, the sophomore team meets Tuesdays and Thursdays, the same period. And on Monday, we would go over their grades at that time, or try to. And then Wednesday and Friday, we would make parent contacts and if our schedules allow it, to check in with some of the kids as well. So we're very happy that we're able to do that. And it certainly is a great academic intervention. So that's going strong. We've already met there. We had a great opening to school. Fantastic student body this year, fantastic. They've been real receptive of everything. And knock on wood, it's gone great. And so we're very pleased. The morale, I feel, is really high at the school, starting the year off, so that's a good thing. Our enrollment was around four hundred and fifty kids when we left in June, and we're up twenty-four students right now. And we've got some coming in every day. So more coming in and less moving out, I guess I'd say. So we're excited about that. And we had our open house last Thursday. We had several people attend, a lot of freshman parents, a lot of good questions, and all the teachers participated, and that went very well. Do you have any questions at all?
What is the enrollment now at the high school?
Four hundred and seventy-six as of yesterday. And I, to be honest with you, I didn't even realize we were down to four fifty-two last year, but when we got the information, we learned of it. So a lot of it, I think, is attributed to, we did, you know, we did, I thought, a fantastic job, the school as a whole, with the open house we did in the spring, the recruiting and such. So, and, you know, we're continuing to find different ways to do that. And with our programs, with all the R. programs we have, and extracurricular sports, and our alternative ed program, and all the different programs we offer, you know, we hope that people look at us as, you know, the best bang for their buck, so to speak, so.
Matt, why did Marilyn only work with just the freshman team?
Why did?
On the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, the training?
Because the freshman, it's the freshman academy. It's an actual, I don't know a lot about the bar grant, but it's, the money's used to bring these people in, and it's training for the freshman academy because of the research shows that the freshman year is so important. And so that was used with them, and that we applied for that grant. It's used for that team.
Okay.
All set?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newitt?
Life at the middle school is swell. We had a great start to the year. I'll start with school news with regard to staffing. We are now at a full staff. I made the last, well, depending on your vote tonight, last hire was made really after the school year started, and that's Suzanne Bell, who's up for consideration for our life skills teacher. And the day before school started, we hired Rodney Dayton for an ed tech position. So I feel really good about having a great staff. We spent time at open house and prior to that, planning for our shift to proficiency. And you'll hear that word throughout the year as we gear up for that change to standards-based education. And that's going to happen this year in all of the unified arts classes. So instead of a zero to one-hundred grade, you'll see a one through four scale. And you'll actually see standards listed on the report card, how kids have done on each of these standards. So that's for all kids in all middle school grades. You'll see some teachers piloting that same type of grading fashion in their core classes as well. And that'll be in addition to the zero to one-hundred scale. You'll also see standards listed with a one through four rating. So parents have been informed about this. They know it's coming. They know they're going to see it. So it's starting to happen, which I'm really pleased with. I put the enrollment numbers there with our big fifth and sixth grade class of a hundred at five and a hundred and eight at grade six. You know, it's really bumped our overall total up from around, you know, three twenty-five last year to three fifty-nine this year. So, you know, the middle school is as big as it's ever been for those four grades. In co-curricular news, I might back up to that. What is nice is that with the addition of all these kids, we have an additional teacher at fifth and at sixth. So the class size still remains right around that twenty ballpark. In fact, that's exactly what we're averaging per home room, is twenty kids, which is very nice. Co-curricular news, last meeting, we are still short a cross-country assistant coach, and that has now been filled by Heather Coulson. The numbers right now for fall sports, fifty kids out for cross-country. With our four soccer teams, we're about fifteen kids on the teams. We have sixty kids between them. And then our fall musical had auditions yesterday and today. There's, there were twenty-seven kids out for that. The show is called Susical the Musical, and it's not till right before Thanksgiving break that we have our show. In apparent news, we've also had our open house. It was last Tuesday, very well attended and very well presented by the teachers. Each grade level gave a presentation to parents so that they know what expectations are all about and what's most important. Kind of excited about this next one. We have a late bus starting this coming Monday, so kids who need to stay after school to get help will actually have a ride home. My guess is there's probably not too many kids too far behind right now, but that probably will change, and there'll probably be kids that need to be staying. So very glad that Ellsworth can offer that. Mr. McCluskey will be offering the first volunteer parent training on seventeenth of September, which is a Saturday. First time he's trying a Saturday. That's at nine in the morning in our library. To parents who want to come into the building and help out, that's your date to come in, and it takes about half an hour. Pretty good. Any questions?
What time is the late bus running?
It'll depart at four o'clock. And I think, I think, I hope we talk a little bit more about details finally. To finalize that, tomorrow we have a leadership team meeting. And it's, you know, we're still working out drop-off points for where those kids will go. But it's been needed for a long time.
So we're not dropping off at individual houses? There will be drop-off points?
The plan right now is to, you know, if a bus is going down the Bayside Road and the kid is right on the Bayside Road, we'd stop in front of this house. But at Alton Avenue, for example, probably you would, kids that have to go up there would be dropped off at that corner. And then, you know, what's tough is you don't know from a day-to-day basis, you know, how many kids are going in this direction and how many kids are going in this direction. And there are two buses going in different directions to, you know, make it so we're not riding around with kids for two hours or something like that.
I know the high school is doing a late bus also.
Same bus, you know, it'll stop at each school.
Yeah. And I know the high school kids have been asked to send a text to their parents if they need to get picked up, because it's going to, the drop-off time will vary depending on who's on the bus, and it's not going to be the same every time.
No, it will not be.
Some middle school kids might not have the ability to text ahead, but.
Yeah, we're going to have some fun.
Some logistics to work out.
Logistics, you know, and that's, I think, we'll take them as they come, and that's all you really can do, but.
Yeah.
It's a good challenge to have. As Mr. Newitt said, this is something that we've been looking for for quite some time. This is an opportunity to do it.
It's a great opportunity.
So whatever kinks arise, we will work them out and make it work.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Jim.
Mrs. Peterson-Roper. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Excellent, thank you. We opened without a hitch, and as you can see by our numbers, we're actually at the lowest that we've been since we opened in six years ago. And that's having our ten pre-K kids, and actually, we're eight with two on board soon, join us. We've had the most in and out that I've seen since I've come to Ellsworth. In fact, one classroom, we, that started out with sixteen children, have only six original children that were placed in the fall, I mean, in the spring, in that classroom. I think we've had about forty-two kids leave and about seventeen children come. So we, we're in transit, and I don't really know why, but we are. So, but they keep coming, and we keep welcoming them with open arms. So as you can see, those are our numbers. We opened up without a hitch. We had our kindergarten open house that was well received. We had the bus drivers, scouts, Ray Daly was there to help with the free and reduced hot lunch and also talk about it. And then the next, that same evening, we had our walk-through. So children who hadn't had an open house still had a chance to come in with their parents and sort of see where their locker might be and where they're going to go. And it seems to really work well because opening school day was wonderful. We had our September sixth, so we opened on Thursday. And on Tuesday, our preschool, with our collaboration with Child and Family Opportunities, started, and it's just wonderful to have them there. It's been seamless, and I know it's going to grow. And it's also just really nice for them to get a sense of what school is like in the big school. We have our welcome back picnic tomorrow night, four-thirty to six-thirty, rain or shine. It looks like it might be rain, and so we'll be in the cafeteria for the first time. But no worries, we'll be ready. And if you're wondering what to bring, it's on our website as well as on the Facebook site of the middle school. Jim talked about our volunteer meeting. We have our open house, which will be on September twenty-first. That's for children in grades one through four. And that's a time to come in and sort of look around and see what's been happening the first couple of weeks of school, or by then, the first four weeks of school, and get a chance to talk with the teachers, and they'll have information about, sort of, the shifts that have happened at the elementary school. Jim mentioned about the shifts for grading and such at the middle school. Last year, we shift to a one-to-four report card, and this year, the standards that will be assessed will actually be listed on the report card. So we're up and ready to go. We have our walk-to-school route. We're hoping that it will begin on September twenty-sixth, although we are re-looking at the routes that we do, the walk-in school bus. Last year, although we had three or four children join us before we got to the Y, we didn't pick up as many kids as we had hoped we'd picked up. So we're running a couple of, we've put in an IT help ticket to sort of look at the different routes now that we have new kids enrolled, to see if there's another route that maybe we can get more kids to walk with us. So we've had one training, and another training will be coming out from Judy Frazier. She's also reaching out to the community and holding meetings with the Kiwanis, the Rotary, the retired teachers, and the list goes on. Our National Walk-to-School Day will be October fifth. We're going to be doing it for kindergarten through eighth grade. We invited the high school, but because of all the construction that's happening there, it just doesn't make sense. So Louie Lupini will be leading our parade. The Ellsworth Police Department have been contacted, and they'll be at the different places to help us cross, and it's always a great time. And October sixth, it's the most fun day for when you're a kid, is your school picture day. And that's coming up before you know it. But I do want to say that, you know, we have a lot of new staff, and I wanted to share something that one of the new staff members said the other day, sent in an email. This is from Tammy Tuznuck. She is going to be actually approved tonight. She was the last hired. And she said, "EEMS is a wonderful place to be and work. I've taught in many schools over the years, all in Wisconsin, of course, and I've never felt such a warm, welcoming, friendly feeling, both from staff members and from parents." So I think that says a lot about our school. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Bowles?
Good evening. Hinkott County Technical Center also had a wonderful opening. Our cafeteria was busting at the seams when we had our first day student assembly. Right now, with ad drop, we're still holding the study at about two-eighteen, which is up from our one-seventy-six last year. That does attribute for about the twenty percent drop we typically have for students between application time and start of school. So I'm really pleased with that. If we could hold up over two-hundred, I'd be really pleased with opportunities that having over two-hundred students creates for us. We are starting safety training this week. Our students started with OSHA training yesterday, so they'll be earning their ten-hour OSHA safety cards this week. Our biggest challenge this fall has been transportation, trying to figure out the bus routes and getting students to their programs on time with the construction. Because for Sumner and Naraguis, they're having several different construction spots to handle. And then also, of course, the biomedical program now being offered at Ellsworth adds an additional stop for all of the buses to drop their biomedical students off at an additional site, plus students going to welding. So we've had to work really collaboratively. The superintendents have been great, working really hard with me on trying to improve how late buses are getting to us and making sure that kids are getting where they need to go. We had our open house on Wednesday, September seventh, and we had our largest turnout. We had over a hundred and twenty people at our school, which for us is really great. A lot of times, we have pretty low attendance for that just because of the travel time for families and work. So we were really thrilled to have that many families join us. People have been calling and asking about Brookside Restaurant. That is opening Wednesday, October fifth, for the first time. So we will be open on the fifth at noon time for people in the community that want to join us on our opening day. An update on Caterpillar Clubhouse. As you know, we had such high requests that we did add an afternoon session. Both the morning and the afternoon session are now full, predominantly three-year-olds, and there is a waitlist. And I would like to reiterate to families that we would love to have your child, but they do have to be potty-trained. We're getting a lot of requests to take kids who are not potty-trained, and that presents a whole other different challenge that a CTE program is not equipped to handle. But we're very excited. Their first day will be Tuesday, October eleventh, with us. So we're really excited to bring the little ones into the building. Biomedical, our biomedical program has started out strongly. She's doing a fantastic job. She has attended trainings at Jackson Lab and is in constant communication with them about resources, equipment use, sharing equipment, field trip opportunities. She also felt like it was really important to have those kids still feel a part of HCTC. So we have arranged that every Friday, they'll attend their class at HCTC. We've provided a space for them. And what they'll do every Friday is debrief their research from the week, do their lab reports, do a lot of their writing, review some of their data, and do those kinds of things that they can just do in a regular classroom. And then that way, kids that are in the bridge year program or that we need to meet with for a variety of other reasons, they're in the building, and we're not trying to pull them from two different places. So every Friday, we have them reporting to HCTC for class, and that's worked out really well. The final thing on the agenda is our draft mission and vision statement that I attached for you. Last year, as you know, the superintendents and the school board reps on the HCTC Advisory Committee did a huge program review. And in addition, Ellsworth School Department revised and created its mission and vision for our district, and you approved that last spring. So one of the things that we felt was very important at HCTC was that with both of those things happening, we thought it was a good time for us to review our school mission and vision so that all of the sending schools, everybody was on the same page about what is the purpose of HCTC and what do we believe it should provide. So what I've provided for you tonight is our draft mission and vision. The HCTC Advisory Committee did review it and approve it at its September meeting with one grammatical change, which is reflected in yours. And what we're hoping to do is have you have some time to review it, and then at the October school board meeting, if we could have an official vote for approval, that would be the time that we would ask to do it. This way, you have it, and you can email me with any questions or concerns or changes that you think should be made. Any questions?
How many students in the biomedical?
Right now, it's dropped to about nine, which actually isn't a bad thing because the equipment is very expensive. And as she's trying to build the program, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. But having her halftime at Ellsworth High School teaching Ellsworth electives has been fabulous because she's already recruiting kids for the program for next year and developing relationships with kids. And I just think, for a lot of reasons, a lot of kids dropped before school even started because they couldn't visualize it in their head. And they panicked, got nervous, and dropped, is what guidance counselors are telling me. And some of them just did not want to go to a high school. They wanted it to be at HCTC. When they found out it wasn't, they were. So I think we have nine committed, invested kids who truly wanted this experience, which is fine. And then I think now, once we have a year under our belt and we showcase what they're doing and the types of things they're doing, those kinds of fears will be laid to rest and will grow moving forward.
How many kids are in each session of the Caterpillar Clubhouse?
I think we're up to fifteen in both.
Wow.
Yes, it's a big group.
That's great.
Oh, yes, that's, yes. She keeps coming in and saying, "Should I add?" I'm like, "No, that is enough." But she's getting calls daily for three-year, it's predominantly for three-year-olds that we're getting requests for.
And how many students are in that program?
She has sixteen in the morning. She's at full capacity, and she has twelve in the afternoon right now.
Wow.
Yeah, that's a popular program.
You were probably too busy today to listen to this, but did you hear that there was on Maine Public Radio program this afternoon about CTE?
I wasn't.
Have you heard about it?
I did not hear about it.
I think it was on Maine Calling, so it was a calling program, and it was a terrific show. And we should get the link to that.
The link to it.
We can post it on, I mean, I'm sure you'd love to hear it and post it on the Facebook page.
Yeah, that'd be great. We may, I may have gotten a link to it this afternoon. I just haven't checked it yet.
A lot of good information on that program about the, what CTE is doing and where it's moving and how important it's become to many, many students.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
No, but I really appreciate having Holm on to go over the mission and vision and just process it. That's helpful, grab that time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you. Ms. Sargent isn't with us tonight, nor is Ms. Corbin Ramos?
No, Mrs. Sargent is attending a soccer game with her daughter. And Mrs. Corbin Ramos is out of town, tending to a new parent. But you have the written reports.
Yes.
And superintendent's report?
Yes, I'm going to reiterate what you heard from our administrators, that it's been a very positive start to the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. The new staff orientation on August twenty-ninth was very well-attended, which means we had a lot of turnover, but it was a very positive session, very beneficial session for all the new staff members. We had a nationally renowned presenter named Anne Beddinghoff present for the first two days with teachers. And she spent nearly two days with the teachers in the ed techs focusing on strategies and ideas for differentiating instruction. And more than one staff member on multiple occasions has said how positive and beneficial that workshop was. And I think one of the most positive things about it is the fact that we're going to be able to have her participate in a couple of live webinars throughout the course of the year to follow up on things she did the first day. So excellent. I had the opportunity to visit each school site during the first week, and the atmosphere in each of the buildings is very positive and engaging. I also provided you with some student enrollment numbers compared to last April first, and certainly, Mrs. Peterson-Roper and Mr. Newitt talked about K through four and five through eight. I've gotten them broken down a little differently. But if you look overall, from K through twelve, we're up by ten students. And again, I will reiterate what Mr. Clark said. I think there was a great recruiting effort at the high school. And I think the fact that we were able to enroll a higher percentage of the incoming freshman class as compared to previous years, that increase in twenty-eight students is well-deserved. And with regard to a reduction in the lower grades, certainly, some of the reduction at K-five is the larger classes going up to the middle school. But you also can't control what you have incoming for kindergarten kids. So as Mrs. Peterson-Roper said, we are still experiencing some enrollments. Something I would like to mention here at the meeting, but this is also for the members of the public. With the opening of school for the year, we'd like to remind all citizens that school buses are on our roadways on a daily basis. And in the interest of safety, there is a state law that requires all vehicles to stop for school buses that are stopped and have their red lights flashing. Our drivers have really done an excellent job monitoring this. And the unfortunate side of that is we've had a number of reported violations already. So it's a credit to our drivers that they're aware of it and they're looking out for the kids' safety. We're also working in collaboration with the police department to step up patrols with the buses, and also to remind everybody that the safety of our students is our highest priority. And we just want to reiterate again, please be aware of your safety when you're on the roads, folks. At your last workshop session as a board, you recalled that Police Department Chief Pete Bickmore provided you with information on an initiative that he's working on called Project Hope. And as you are aware, and many people in the public are becoming aware, Project Hope is an initiative. It's going to address the current opioid epidemic in a constructive and productive manner. And while the formal rollout of this program is a couple of weeks away, I did speak with Mr. Chief Bickmore yesterday and discussed your conversation with him about an expression of public support. And he was comfortable with having that as a discussion tonight. So I would like to ask if the board would consider making a formal public expression of support for the initiative. And if so, you could make a motion in a second and take a vote at this point in time.
I'd like to make a motion to support the initiative, the Project Hope program that Chief Bickmore is introducing.
Will second that? Discussion?
Just want to mention that Project Hope and, there's many other programs. Project Hope is taking place all across the country. And in some cases, it has a slightly different name, but programs like it are taking place at many different police departments across the country. And it's a way of, instead of just going, treating drug users as criminals, it's allowing them to come into the police station and say, "I want to, I need, I need to, I want to quit this. I want to get rid of my addiction." And then the police department will find help for them. And so it's had a lot of success, and it's. And so, it's had a lot of success, and it's... It's, like I said, it's happening in a lot of places, and we're fortunate that I think we're going to try to introduce it here, so...
Thank you. Pass on to Chief Bickmore that the board is publicly supportive of that initiative.
Well, he didn't vote.
He didn't vote yet?
Yes.
After you vote, I will let him.
All those in favor?
Now, although it is still summer, and the weather has been outstanding and is projected to be that way, I want to let you know that we will be seeking bids for snow removal and salting and sanding services for the 2016-17 season. The formal invitation to bid will be published in the Ellsworth American over the next two weeks, and will be out on the department's, school department's website. The submission deadline is October 5th, which is also the day that we'll do the formal public reading. And we ask that prospective bidders include all the requested information in their bids and submit their bid in the required format. Now, this year, in addition to accepting bids for a single-year contract, we'll be entertaining bids for multiple-year contracts. So, a number of teachers that you will be voting in a couple of ways tonight. One, voting to acknowledge the action I took on your behalf, and another, will be voting to confirm a nomination, a teacher that was hired in the month of September. Those teachers, you'll be voting on Michael Whittick, science at Ellsworth High School, Jennifer Bernhardt, English at Ellsworth High School, Tammy Tuznion, grade 1 at EEMS, Judith Massur, alternative education at EHS, and Carolyn Cutney, gifted and talented, halftime at EHS. And Suzanne Bell will be a special education teacher at EMS. We also had a number of other hires that don't require action by the board and also transfers that I'd like to report. Melanie Ruhark, who has been in the alternative ed position, has transferred to be a full-time English teacher at the high school. Silas Ratten, who was also working in the alternative ed position, has moved to be a full-time math teacher. You heard Mr. Newitt mention Rodney Dayton is an ed tech at Ellsworth Elementary Middle School. Report that. Academic coordinator at HCTC is Susan Zava Kovats. Adult education evening coordinator is Christie Smith. And Mr. Newitt already reported on the assistant cross-country coach, which would be Heather Colson. And assistant wrestling coach at the high school, the earnest Chip Dugans. And mentioned the correspondence, letters of resignation and retirement. Janet Adler, grade 1, EEMS. Heidi Coghill, special education at EEMS. Kristen Hardison, EEMS ed tech 3. Dwayne Bradford, bus driver. Rebecca Boudreaux, English teacher at the high school. And Dennis Ely, assistant track and field coach. And it does leave us with one vacancy, which is a special education position at EEMS. And what I'd like to close with this evening is, I had the opportunity to speak earlier today with a gentleman named Jack Turkot. He asked me to pass on his best to the board, all the school department employees in the city of Ellsworth. Do you have any questions? That concludes my report.
How's Jack doing?
Jack is doing very well. He is serving again as superintendent in Endover a couple of days a week, and he's loving every minute of it.
Just can't quit, can he?
Well, I made that comment to him today, and I think he's contemplating whether this is his last year. But I doubt it.
Dan, I have a couple of questions about Rachel's rapport. I don't know if you could answer them, or if you'd prefer I wait until she's back?
I would suggest waiting until she's back.
Okay.
Item H, committee reports.
The policy committee met yesterday, but I think we're going to talk about those policies in a minute.
Old business, there's none. New business, staff presentation.
Well, staff presentation tonight was going to be Bill Zelek from the Scutick Institute, and I think you've heard Rachel speak of him at previous meetings. He has consulted with us on a contractual basis, working with our administrators and staff to review and analyze student assessment data for a means of improving and informing our instructional practices. However, because Rachel had unexpectedly been called to be out of town, we felt that we better have Mr. Zelek come back in in October, and that was a recent development. So we do not have a staff presentation for you this evening.
Thank you. J2, the second read and approval of policy EHA electronic signature filing.
I make a motion that we approve the second read and adopt policy EHA electronic signature filing as recommended by the policy committee.
Second.
Discussion?
We didn't make any changes from the last time at the board map.
All those in favor? J3, the second read and approval of policy JJIE substance abuse and abuse by students participating in co-curricular.
I make a motion to approve the second read and adopt policy JJIE substance use abuse by students participating in co-curricular as recommended by the policy committee.
Second that?
Discussion?
Again, nothing has changed since the first read.
All those in favor? First read of amended policy JICK bullying and cyberbullying prevention in schools.
I make a motion to approve the first read of amended policy JICK bullying and cyberbullying prevention in schools as recommended by the policy committee.
A second that?
Discussion?
Dan, do you want to mention why this change has come about?
Sure. This policy is an amendment, recommended amendment to a policy that was passed a couple of years ago. Now, what's happened with bullying over the past several years, as we all know, bullying has become a pervasive issue in our schools, and there's been a lot of action and work being done in the legislature and within and among school districts to come up with a better, more uniform way of handling instances and reports of bullying. Policy that was passed a couple of years ago works extremely well. What it put into place was a requirement that any person who works in a school, contracts with a school, is associated employment or contractually in the school, is required to address and report instances of bullying to school administrators and designees. Administrators, upon receiving the report, are bound to investigate, determine whether or not the case of bullying is substantiated, and if it is substantiated, they take a certain course of action. If it's not substantiated, they take another course of action, which may still require, excuse me, addressing whatever behaviors were reported. And once that investigation is done and actions are taken, there needs to be a formal communication with the parents of both students. What's happened over the last legislative session in the past year was, there've been a few changes made to that policy. One of the changes in this particular document that you see this evening is that the policy has been reordered a little bit. Most of it is the same as in the previous version. However, there are a couple of changes. One is it has revised three reporting documents. There is an investigation document, a response document, and a communications document. It's also requiring that now, in addition to communicating with parents, there's a requirement to implement a safety plan, and a safety plan is developed with administrators, parents, and students. Doesn't say it in the policy, but another change that comes along with this is, prior to this coming year, all instances of bullying that are substantiated need to be reported through the state's data reporting system. As the state is changing its data reporting system one more time, there's a system known as NEO, which is a system through which we report most of our data. Bullying needs to be reported now through that particular system. Again, I think what this change in the policy does, it clarifies it once again. It again specifies that anybody who works in a school who observes or has reports of bullying brought forth needs to report it to administrators. Administrators need to follow through in a very thorough fashion, and at the end of following through in a thorough fashion with investigations, to take action, put a safety plan into place, and communicate with parents. The other thing I think it's important to mention here, once this policy is changed, it will be presented on the websites and communicated to parents that it has been changed, and that's a requirement of the law as well. I think it's also important to mention to our parents and citizens out there, our school website has been very proactive. We have a link on it which allows families or students to report bullying anonymously. That's another thing to remember in this policy. Just because a report may come in in an anonymous fashion, we as school administrators still have the responsibility and obligation to follow up on it. That is presented for first read to you this evening.
Thank you.
Favor? Any more discussion?
No.
No? All those in favor? Acknowledgement of superintendent's action taken on behalf of the board in hiring of teacher staff.
And these were all teachers hired in the month of August, and unfortunately, none of the teachers were able to be here this evening. So what I would like to do, and I presume the board would like to take all the teachers under number five as a group, but I can give you a brief bio on each one of them. Michael Whittick comes to Ellsworth High School with 20 years of successful experience teaching chemistry, biology, and physical science at Piscataquis Community High School in Guilford, and seven years teaching math and science in Stubeen. Earned his BA in biology from Southern Connecticut State College, and his master's in educational administration from Capella University. He's certified in both physical and life science, and he served as his last district's chemical hygiene officer for 16 years. Has very strong references, and the interview committee believes he'll be a very strong veteran addition to the staff at Ellsworth High School. Judith Massur will be hired as the alternative education teacher at Ellsworth High School. She comes to Ellsworth High School with 19 years of successful experience, working predominantly in alternative school settings, with the most recent seven years at the Watershed School in Camden. She earned her BA in secondary education and history from Franklin Pierce, and her master's in teaching at Brown University, where she's also worked summers, working with students moving into teaching. Her interest in working at Ellsworth High School is to bring her experiences in alternative programming and passion for working with students who are eligible for alternative programming into a public school that has an alternative program that has room to grow. Again, her references were very strong, and the interview committee believes she'll be a very good addition to the staff at Ellsworth High School. Jennifer Bernhardt, English teacher at Ellsworth High School. She comes to Ellsworth High School with a bachelor's in secondary education, English from the University of Manchester Farmington, and four successful years of experience at Winthrop High School. She has experience teaching AP language and composition and college and honors English. Additionally, she has experience at Winthrop, working on the development of their proficiency-based system. Again, she has strong references. The interview committee believes that even though she's a young teacher, she'll be a very good addition to the staff at Ellsworth High School. Tammy Tuznion, who would come to us as a grade 1 teacher at EEMS, and as Mrs. Peterson-Roper mentioned, she spent previous 11 years in her career in the state of Wisconsin, teaching at the K, K-1 multi-age, grade 1, grade 3, and grade 4. She earned her bachelor's in elementary education from St. Norbert College in Wisconsin. Her experience comes working with the Common Core standards, working with fellow teachers in Wisconsin to implement what she called problem-based learning activities in the classroom, and in implementing personalized learning into her classroom activities. As with our other candidates, her references are very strong, and the interview committee believes she'll be a strong addition to the staff at EEMS. Gifted and talented at Ellsworth High School, and we're very pleased that this is the first time we've been able to bring a candidate forward in almost a year, and we're bringing forward a familiar face, Carolyn Cutney. She's a familiar face at the high school, as she currently serves as a halftime Spanish teacher, so she'll be adding halftime gifted and talented. She recently became certified as a GT instructor. Her BA was earned in Spanish and English from Base College, and she has a master's in administration from Harvard University. Her experience is working both in the classroom as a teacher and at the college level as an enrollment counselor will benefit her in developing appropriate programming for identified students at the high school. And the interview committee believes that she'll be a strong addition serving in this role. So what I would ask that the board do is to acknowledge my action taken on your behalf in confirming the nominations of those teachers.
I move that we acknowledge and prove the superintendent's action taken on behalf of the board in confirming the nominations of the teachers that Mr. Higgins just described.
A second that? Discussion? All those in favor? Consideration of teacher nomination.
Yes, and this is a teacher that we hired in the month of September, so we'll go through the traditional process. I would like to recommend to you Suzanne Bell as the life skills teacher at EMS. Suzanne Bell is recommended to be our life skills teacher of students in grades 4 through 8. She's certified to teach students with severe and profound handicaps, and has taught special ed for 15 years in North Carolina and in Bangor School Department. Her students have ranged in age from preschoolers to teenagers. While her current position has had her out of the classroom, working specifically with the paperwork and administration side of special education, it's her desire to return to the classroom, and that prompted her to apply for this position. She comes very highly recommended and displays a knowledge, experience, and enthusiasm that Mr. Newitt and his committee were seeking at EEMS. I had an opportunity to do a second interview with her, and I would reiterate what Mr. Newitt has reported, and I think she'll be a solid addition to the staff at EEMS. So would nominate her to the board for a first-year probationary contract for the 16-17 school year.
I make a motion to confirm the superintendent's nomination of the following teacher as presented the first-year probationary contract for the 2016-2017 school year, Suzanne Bell.
Second that?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Review and discussion of student handbooks.
In those in your packets, you received a variety of copies of student handbooks from our schools. By policy, you are having the opportunity to review those handbooks. If there are substantive changes, there would need to be a vote. We did not determine there were substantive changes, but you've got them for review, and the administrators are here, ready to take any questions if you have them.
The only question I had, do we need to add the bullying policy to those handbooks now, Dan, or can that wait?
Well, there would be a reference to bullying in the handbooks now with the existing policy. Once that's changed, I don't think we will need to change the handbooks. What we will do is make sure we communicate with the parents and the families that there has been a change in policy and make it available to them.
How many years has the reference to the policy been in the handbook? I liked that.
I want to say it's been in state law, three or four years. When I look at the administrators, I'm not sure. Reference to the bullying policy?
Do you mean, Brenda, that this is what you... These are the policies you should be aware of?
Yeah. It might give, like bullying, and then it would give policy JICK after parentheses and...
That would be IT did that for us.
I was in charge of a district handbook to link all the policies before we used that template, and they fill in the individual pieces.
I think that that's so helpful to parents who are really looking to see why we make some of the decisions that we make. They can refer back to the policy without having to go around Robin Hood's barn to find out which policy it is they're looking for. So I thought that was a great piece in there.
If you're web-based, it works.
That's true.
If you're not, that's why we don't do paper anymore, because you really can't do that hyperlink.
Right. But at least if we're on the paper, they could go onto the web and find it, and that to me made a lot of sense.
I think it was four or five years ago that the statutory requirement to place that in your policy was implemented.
So are the handbooks, none of the handbooks are going to be printed? They're all going to only be electronic?
We have, at our school, what we said is if you prefer to have one printed to let us know, we'll print one out for you.
Okay.
Yep. And we do have one in the office, in case.
Okay.
Do we need to go?
No, no need to take action.
Okay. Thank you. Calendars and announcements, meeting schedule. School board workshop, September 27th, 2016, at the Ellsworth School Department offices at 6:00 PM.
And Mrs. Thomas, if I could say a couple of things that would be on the agenda for that evening. One would be a question regarding participation in multiple sports in one season. That's a question that's been bouncing around. I think the last time it came up formally in Ellsworth was about 20 years ago, but a question was posed this year, and I think it's a good opportunity for the board to hear both sides of that. And I know Mr. Clifford and Mr. Frost plan to come, having the chance to speak with Mr. Newitt and his athletic administrator. I think it might be appropriate for them to attend as well. And there was another sports-related piece that came up last winter with regard to cooperative teams. Many of you are familiar with that concept at the high school, but we found last year